I think so. Cut down on something.
Well, welcome to the August 23 meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners taking place at 5:30. And I will ask for our clerk to read the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Futterer.
Present.
Commissioner Latonis.
We're here.
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Jamison.
Here.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
All present in the conference room.
Thank you. We have an addition to the agenda tonight, new business, item 21063, if you didn't get the last notice. It's an award of sole source bid Minuteman Security Technologies of South Portland. It'll be added to, as they say, new business. With those that would so like to join me, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to our meeting, and it's masked time again, which I don't enjoy, but it's required. And we will start off with the next item on the agenda is may I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 27?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, additions, subtractions, omissions? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. We have a informational report by Sheriff Joyce, his letter to the Criminal Justice Academy. Does anybody have any questions of the sheriff? Seeing, go ahead.
Just express the thought. Thank you very much for following up on that, Sheriff. Before the, before the, any changes ever get made, I'm sure you won't be the last one to raise that issue.
Comments from the public. Travis, do we have any comments from the public?
We've not received any comments.
Consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve items 21061 and item 21062?
So moved.
Second.
Any, no discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. New business. Item 21063, award of sole source bid Minuteman Security Technology, South Portland, Maine, for the installation of additional cameras at the county jail. Can I have, let's have some discussion on that. Does anybody have things that they, I guess what I should do is ask the sheriff because he's put it on the agenda.
Just so that you understand, no, it came from Facilities Department. Facilities is taking the lead on this. Sheriff might be able to answer some questions on it, but the Facilities Department was the lead agency on it.
Okay.
Honestly, I'd like to say that I know about it. Sometimes I don't know. So this is one of those cases. I can tell you that we're always trying to increase the cameras because of Prison Rate Elimination Act, and there's a lot of still blind spots in the jail. So that's about all I can give you on this. I will say that Minuteman Security is the people that we use for all of our video cameras, so it stays consistent with the quality.
I'll move passage.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. New business, item 21064, authorizing the county manager to submit the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Performance Plan.
Thank you. This item is coming before you this evening as a public hearing item. We are up against time here in terms of submission of this plan. It is due August 31st. As the commissioners are aware, we've kept you updated along the way. We've had probably two workshops over the last three months introducing you to where we are at with the performance plan, most recent being just two weeks ago on August 9th. We came before you with a slide deck bringing you through what we were proposing for internal use of the opera funds, as well as some of the themes that we heard from the outside within the region to spend the money on. So we have incorporated those thoughts that we presented back in August 9th, which seemed to be appropriate by the commissioners to move forward with, into this document that I just handed you hot off the press this evening. And that is kind of a, I would say it's probably a 75, 80% completed document. We are still working on it. Travis is leading the way with us adding input in paragraphs here and there. And it is a document that is in need of submission by next week. And it is one of those documents that we and the state of Maine are the only two that need to submit this document because we are over 250,000 in population. So we have kind of a, an increased responsibility in terms of documentation and reporting. So just wanted to introduce this this evening. I did not plan to go through the slide deck again or through the spreadsheet because not much has changed with that regard. It's solely to have further discussion on what you have before you this evening and seek approval or authorization for that matter to send this document off to the Department of Treasury once it is completed early next week. So staff is here to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, and we look for your support on moving this forward. Thank you.
Discussion.
I'm ready to move passage to this, but I do have a couple of comments when appropriate timing.
I'd second the motion.
Discussion.
Thanks. I think it would be helpful for anyone that's, that's watching because there are at least three levels that we know of, of activity related to this federal program, town and city, county, of course, and as well the state. And I've had a lot of contact with people. One person wanted, has been working very hard on getting funding to dredge the Portland Harbor. And that's a worthy project, but not one that we're allowed to fund. Other people have very fervent and, and well-designed ideas for ways that we can improve our communities, especially help people who are in the kind of the lower economic rungs get a, get a hand up to, to be able to support their families better and function better. Again, these are things that may or may not be within the purview of what we can accomplish. We know that we have the funding for this current year. We're not sure because they don't start paying for things for next year until October 1st, whether the federal government in the end will actually fund both halves of this, of this program. Certainly, it's very helpful to the taxpayers that we're able to recoup some of the extraordinary expenses we encountered over the last couple of years in our programming, in, especially in our public safety programs where we've had to implement very expensive and very logistically challenging procedures to, to keep people who are entrusted to our custody safe. And at the same time, we lost a lot of revenue at the Civic Center, at the Cross Insurance Arena, and incurred a rather large expense as we outfitted that facility for, for use as an emergency hospital if it was needed, and thankfully, and by a kind of a narrow margin, it was not. So it actually probably will not be needed for that, but turns out that we, we would be capable of doing that if we absolutely needed to, even now. So I support this. We have intentionally planned this to address the things that we know about, that we know we can fund. We're waiting for the Treasury Department to be rather more specific about what they think the edges of things look like. The manager has already mentioned that unlike almost any other jurisdiction in the state, except for the state itself, our audit requirements because of the size of the county are very, very much more detailed than, than others are likely to encounter. So we have to be mindful of our need to, to be more exacting than most in how we put things together and operate them. So I think this is a, this is the end result of a lot of hard work over a number of weeks and months, and I'm happy to support it. And, and some of the things that we've heard from constituents and, and social service agencies in particular, we do have, as long as the feds fund year two of this project, we do probably have some opportunities there for, for next year. And we've already designed a, an inclusive process for reviewing all of that. So I think we just press forward from here.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just quickly, thank you, Steve. I want to thank Jim and Travis and the whole executive staff on short notice, and wasn't really months, it was a matter of weeks, throwing together this very detailed report to address our reporting requirement. It's nice to get the money from the federal government, but you have to justify every dollar that you spend. And the, the template and the report that you've set up not only satisfies that requirement, but it, it's an excellent job. It's very professionally done, and I think it'll serve us well going forward. But thank you all for your hard work and very short notice.
Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, having had a very short time to review this, but knowing the process that went into it, I skimmed through it. It looks like a very comprehensive, comprehensive job, and at least the, what, next but last draft of the, of the document. So, and pulling this together on the notice, kind of notice that we have is a really remarkable, remarkable job. I think going through it, I would urge, I would urge anybody who's interested to look through the top of the types of projects that are proposed to be funded under this. There's, it's across the entire county and for a lot of really critical needs that we need, and would also, will also be helping us continue to mitigate the COVID, the COVID, COVID pandemic and in a lot of different settings, including our jail, the courthouse, and, and in other places. So I mean, this, this is a very large amount of money coming to the county, and I think we are doing our utmost to make sure that it is appropriately applied and appropriately and thoroughly accounted for. So thank you very much for putting this in front of us tonight. I'm perfectly happy to, happy to vote in favor.
Other comments?
The thing that I will add to this is I too will support it. But I think what we must realize is that things are very fluid. We, we're not sure at all how much money we will get ultimately in the end because the federal government's still up in the air about what they're doing and where they're going to send funds and, and how we can work with the state and the municipalities because they may have additional funds coming in. The other thing that I would say is, well, I have, one question I have, how often do we have to do this report?
Sure. So this report's required annually. And to your concern, Commissioner, and also in case anybody's curious, what you're voting on that hasn't been written yet, the only portion that hasn't been complete is the section that describes how these projects explicitly help support people in marginalized communities, how they achieve better equity in Cumberland County. This document is fluid, is a living document because it's about outcomes more than expenses and bills. It's our requirement to identify the challenges and needs of our county and how they can be addressed with ARPA funds. So it's why, you may notice, there aren't dollar amounts in there because we expect that some of those things may change. We expect that we may need to make adjustments depending on if there are more immediate pressing needs that arise in the next few months and so on. But this is our approach for how we hope to improve the region and the challenges it faces, especially those that were highlighted by the pandemic. So it's not an explicit purchase plan. It, it's a goal to address problems, and it will constantly be changing. But every August 31st, we have to submit an updated version.
Thank you, Travis. And I think that your remark about it is fluid and things will change allays some of the fears that I had because when I first looked at some of the projects and I thought they were nailed down, I was going to say, oh, boy, how do we know that we're even going to get the money for the second tranche? So thank you for that. Is there any other comments that anybody needs to?
If I could just make mention, for those who are going to watch this on video in a couple of days, I just want to direct everyone to the county's website because the county's website is going to have all these documents on there. So if anyone's interested in seeing the direction the county's taken with the use of our first tranche of $28 million, it's on our, it's on our website. There's also an opportunity, and we still have the portal up, for public comment. We're going to be taking public comment for the next three or four years on how we allocate these funds. So if anyone is out there that wants to weigh in on how we spend this money, please go to that public comment portal and share your thoughts. So, thank you.
The only thing I might add to that was the caution that Travis has, has mentioned a couple of times. Before you come in with a lot of your orders, please look at some, what some of the rules are from Treasury because there's a lot of things that, at least I thought were going to be available, that aren't.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 21065, I would like a motion to approve the county commissioner's remote meeting policy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Jim, do you have anything you want to?
Yes. Like I said in the position paper, this policy is needing to come before the commissioners for approval, hopefully approval, on the basis of a, the recent legislation that has come through this past session in which the legislation now allows for the continuation of video meeting. Much like what we've lived over the last 15 months during the pandemic, there has been the review and the willingness to allow for that to continue. However, there's some conditions and guidelines that need to be put on. So I have before you this evening a remote participation policy, which is in accordance with Title 1 MRSA Section 403B of state statutes, which outlines this new requirement. And for a government body to be able to go and do a remote meeting or a hybrid remote meeting, hybrid meeting, you could all be here in this room, but there might be one or two commissioners that might not be able to get into the meeting but can video in, that's allowed. But you've got to have this policy in place. So that's why it's before you this evening. Who knows what September looks like or October? And if we don't have this policy behind us, we're forced to come in to meet in person on a monthly basis versus maybe something's happening with the Delta variant 30 days from now that's going to force us all back home and meet online. So with this policy in place, we'll be able to do that. One thing I should make mention to is that every board within Cumberland County needs to pass this policy. The commissioners are not doing a blanket policy for our organization. So this policy is going to be before the Cross Insurance Arena trustees next meeting, which I think their next meeting might be September or October. I am looking into whether we need to do this for the Board of Assessment Review. And there was one other board that, that's out there that I need to, I think it's the
Communications Board.
CCRCC board. So all those boards would be reviewing a very similar document, but just changing county commissioners to whatever the respective board is. So that's something that's going to be in the works. You're the first to go through this and hopefully approve it, and then we need signatures on it so that we can file this away to be legal. This will require us to work with IT and outfit this room so that we can have two-way communication through Zoom. What that looks like, I can't tell you right now, but it's, it's going to be probably somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 to do it. So Aaron and I have had some preliminary conversations, and it's on his radar, but I wanted to get this through first before we started doing any wholesale changes to this room and making that a reality. So with that said, I'd ask for you to review and approve the remote participation policy. Thank you.
Discussion. Go ahead, Tom.
Let's just have a question. I mean, this is, this requires either an emergency or urgent issue that requires the public body to meet by remote methods, or there's some other conditions here, illness, physical condition, so forth. Is there some process we have to go through to say, yes, we have an emergency? Or do we just look out into the real end of the world and say, yes, well, the pandemic is raging again, or the floodwater's rising or something, and so we need to have an emergency meeting? Or do, how does that, is there some process that we will go through to authorize this in any particular case?
I think the, the process is just deeming that maybe the Delta variant is too dangerous to meet in person. We're all here right now with masks on.
Right.
What's the next step? I mean, this room is not an easy room to social distance in. So if we get to that next level up that we need to get away from one another, more so than just wearing masks, that's when I think the chair can say, we're going remote September, and we will automatically end. The key balancing point here is whatever mode we're in, whether we're all remote or whether we're in hybrid, the key theme through this policy is making sure that the public has as much access as possible. That is review of any documentation that's in play, having the ability to weigh in with public comment, and having that back and forth with the commissioners. So that's really the undertone here, is not stripping away the public process in the public meeting. So, but depending upon what type of meeting we're going to go through, I think that's the call of the chair.
And then another scenario under this, thank you for that explanation. Another scenario under this, number two, illness or other physical condition or temporary absence from the jurisdiction that caused a member. Does this mean if we're on vacation, we can, we can phone it in, or is that?
If that's a physical condition, yeah, sure.
Well, I mean, if I'm not here, if I'm in, you know, in, back home in Indiana and I need to, need to come to a meeting, is that, is that covered by this? Or is that?
Well, I guess that would fall under the temporary absence from the jurisdiction. And that would be, if, if you're in Indiana, that would, and the rest of four other commissioners are here, we would have to open up the Zoom and make sure that the public portal was there.
It was going to take a little more free planning than just me calling you 15 minutes before the meeting, saying, oh, guess what, I'm not here.
Well, I hope if you're in Indiana, you know that more than 15 minutes earlier.
I think I would recognize if that was the case. I rarely end up there by accident, I have to say. No, thank you.
Any further comments, Jim?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have comments? You're looking for a vote on this, correct?
Correct. And there's signatures to be had also.
Okay.
I move we pass the
Oh, I think we've
Have we done that already?
Yeah, we've got a motion.
Did we get a motion?
Yes. Okay. Those in favor of passing the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So we're now at the period of comments. County manager, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
The only comments I have right now is I want to thank staff for really stepping up over the last couple of weeks on getting this performance plan done. It's nice to have an accomplished writer on staff that can really rip out paragraphs pretty quick and have them read very well afterwards. So appreciate all the work Travis has been doing on this because it has been a very tight timeframe and really figuring out what we want to do and what we want to say. The other item I'd like to update the commissioners on is our hiring practice. As the commissioners are aware, we do have the recruiter position out on the street. We have received, I think, one or two resumes on that position thus far, and hoping for more. I think the deadline on that is September 3rd. We are in the process of hiring or going through the interview process for a public health manager. We have interviewed four people so far, with our last person tomorrow. And our hopes are by the end of this week, we'll have an understanding whether we want to pursue one individual or have second interviews with multiple interviews, individuals. So the process is moving very good there, and we had some terrific candidates in that public health manager's position. We got really lucky on the candidate pool there. And lastly, we have hired a compliance and audit manager who will be the point person overseeing our $58 million worth of ARPA funds. As you can tell, the reporting and tracking of this money is, in a sense, on steroids. And it's going to be a full-time position and one that we can charge off to ARPA for the next four or five years. So we have hired an individual who is doing a very similar type job for Arapahoe County in Colorado. And that individual is in the, in the process of getting his home life in order to make the move to Cumberland County. His first day will be September 20th. So that's kind of an update on the three positions that we have out there. Great candidates on all, on two out of three. I don't know the two candidates for the recruiter just yet, but hoping for some promising results there also. One other item, as I talk about the recruiter, we have drafted up some what I call election signs that are going to advertise the correction officer position and the salary and benefits associated with it. It's a very succinct message. Travis did his graphic artist work there and created that. And so we're in the process of getting that out to the printers and getting those printed up so that we can get those out across the county. I think, talking with Naldo, I think we're 10, 12 per community. So we're hoping that that will be good visible intersections that those will locate in, and hopefully we'll have those out within the next couple of weeks. So that concludes my communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Executive staff, we don't have Alex here.
No, we gave Alex Nope. We gave Alex vacation for once.
Getting soft.
Because you know what to do when he's on vacation?
Travis.
I have nothing else tonight, Commissioner.
Oh, very good. Comments from the county commissioners?
She shook us off. She shook us off. I didn't see that.
Next time, we'll require her to stand up and county commissioners. Neil?
Thank you, Steve. And just briefly, as you all are aware, that, you know, our pandemic recovery is good, it's bad, it's good again, and we're all in masks here tonight. As our students start school, let's be conscious of that, and let's be conscious that with a little bit of work and precaution, you all can make a difference in your homes, in your communities, in your schools. And Maine is in a great situation. Cumberland County is in a great situation because everyone has worked hard, and let's keep us that way. 73% of our residents are already vaccinated. And, you know, if we get to be 80%, that's close to herd immunity. So continue to do the great job. I know it's not the most convenient thing, but for your families, for your colleagues, and for your neighbors, it's the safe and right thing to do. Let's all be cautious in general, because school's starting, kids will be on the side of the road. Sports will be happening again, so that's some more normalcy. But I want to thank everyone for their efforts in that regard, and let's continue the hard work so we can turn the corner and get 100% back to normalcy. Thank you.
Go on.
Oh, yes, thank you. I certainly echo Neil's, Neil's comments. I would add, we do have a high vaccination rate in the county. We're doing very well on that, but for people who have not been vaccinated and still, and don't have a medical condition that prevents that, that is the number one best thing you could do to protect yourself, protect your family, and help all of us protect each other. This is, at this point, given the circumstances that we're in, getting vaccinated is like, you know, agreeing to stop at a stoplight, stop at a stop sign. It's to, it's to protect everybody that we, that we take this step. So I think that's something I can urge, urge on anyone to do it. If you have some medical condition that prevents it, it's most important that the rest of us are vaccinated to prevent it, to protect, to protect the people who can't be. That's what herd immunity or community immunity means, is that the vaccination level is so high that that's, the virus doesn't have a chance to spread. There's no hosts available to spread, and it could work wonders for folks who are not able to protect themselves that way. So that's the number one step. Finally, on personal note, my final guests of the summer have left, so I'm looking forward to enjoying Memorial or Labor Day coming up when, when I can have my house back to myself and have the state a little less crowded so that I can actually pull into traffic at the end of my street without waiting for 10 or 15 minutes. It'll be nice to have that happen. So not, not to dismiss lightly, the folks who come in business every year, but sometimes it's nice to have your house back yourself.
Thank you. Sue?
No, I'm all set. I'll be quiet this week.
Commissioner Cludie?
Well, I couldn't help but notice that Tom is getting his house back, and I'm going in the opposite direction here in the next seven days or so, but that's what summer's all about. I don't have an awful lot to say. I certainly join 100% with what Neil has mentioned. I look at the New York Times every once in a while, and every day, they have a graph of who's doing what, and who's doing well, and who isn't. And I think I've mentioned before, at times, Cumberland County has been the best vaccinated county in the nation. And last time I noticed it, we were still in the top 10. That's good. I mean, that's, that, that shows some community spirit that I think we all have, have been aware of for a long time. I did want to shout out Travis Kennedy for, for one thing in particular. He has been remarkably responsive to, to people who've contacted me, frankly. A couple of city councilors, past and present, Portland mayor's, past and present, not present at the moment, but who had been working on projects over many years and have an interest in, in things that the, that the project that could be funded through the ARPA program. And they, they all have expressed great appreciation that they've had a chance to speak with Travis and get some guidance on where we stand and how we might be able to help them and what our plans are that might fit with what they have in mind. So they appreciated that a lot. I did too. And they, they thought it was a very helpful process. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I'll reiterate again, and I guess a few words, just please get your shot. It's important, as has been mentioned, students, they're going to be in to areas where they're going to be closer together, so the opportunity for transmission is going to be higher. Don't forget you're older relatives, and I'm one of them. Our systems are not as vital as others, and so we are very vulnerable to the disease. And the weather outside is cooling, so it's going to drive more and more people inside, and the opportunity for transmission is greater. The other thing, and I will leave the virus aside and again go to staff and say thank you. And where I'm getting the comments from is from the other counties. I'm in a position where I can hear that, and they use, they're using this county as a resource. They get a question, they don't know where to turn, they call here. And people have been most responsive, and it's been greatly appreciated. So we're not only helping our citizens, we're helping the citizens of the state. And that, again, I say thank you to the staff. And with that, unless somebody has a comment for the good of the county, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.